Welcome to the Village of Webster Board Meeting for Tuesday, September 8th, 2023. Uh, five, excuse me. And, uh, as we normally, we will rise now for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mike, would you lead us, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to defy the Ninety-Ninth Day of America and to draw the which is the end, one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You be seated. We have scheduled for since fifteen, a public hearing, uh, proposed local law number two of twenty twenty-five entitled, "The Village of Webster Best Value Contract Award." Uh, right now, it is only about, um, six oh seven. So at this particular time, we will quickly go to board business and, uh, we will come back to that. Okay? So our first item on our agenda tonight would be resolution to approve the minutes of August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Can you have them in your packet?
Side of the draft.
Interesting format.
Not long.
Yep.
Daryl, everybody else's looks a little better than yours.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Maranty?
Aye.
Trustee Salida?
I would say aye.
Okay. Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Uh, next we have our.
Moving on to what?
Claims and, uh, warrants. Quite a packet I've read this time.
Yeah, they're right.
Yeah, yeah, I've got three left then.
I looked them over and didn't have any issues.
Make it walk. And trust you guys today noted anything? All right. Well, if no one has any questions on anything, uh, then I would ask for a motion to approve the claims and warrants.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Maranty?
Aye.
Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have a resolution to adopt, uh, seeker resolution on proposed local law number.
I think the next two you gotta skip until you have a public hearing.
Number five.
Let's see, that is on the Village of Webster Value Contract, and so is the next one. Yeah. Number one, that until we have our public.
Yeah, number five, you gotta skip also.
The next three, sorry.
But you gotta, you gotta go down to number six.
Six and seven.
We have had your change.
That just can't be done until you pass the resolution.
Cause it's best on, it's based on.
Now, just.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So parking lot lease.
Next item that we have is a resolution to authorize a near the sign parking lot lease. Uh, nine thirteen fifteen seven, West Main, all one property. However, since this is the first I've even done a prize, but I think I need to read this through. Oh, and I don't know Jake, whether you have any input into this, but, uh. Ready?
Exhibit A explains it. Well, at least we're gonna get to six fifteen.
Parking lot lease, parking lot lease on including the sidewalk, sidewalk surface?
If that's a sidewalk that's rims on the south side of the parking lot behind businesses on West Main Street, and we own the first, about six or eight spots, and then there's a couple spots that are owned by seven, these spots are owned, it's in front of, well, or Metro Sports used to be, it's Paparigio's now. We've had a lease with them for a number of years. Uh, last one that we signed was in fourteen. I was looking for something else, and, uh, in the, in the parking lot leases, I came across this one, and there was no, uh, it came up in twenty-one, is it twenty-one? No, it came up in twenty-fourteen. I thought we signed in fourteen one. No, it expired in fourteen, that's right.
You signed it.
Yep, so it, it came up in fourteen to renew it, and it was stable, and then never brought back up at the, the next meeting. I said, there was a, the mayor in a discussion with some of the businesses there and looked to change the hours of parking, but that parking lot, and never, the lease never made it back on, so.
What's it behind, Jake?
Behind nine, well, behind what Paparigio's is now, that old stretch of that building. They extend, their property line extends about halfway into the parking lot. Um, and it's always been, you know, public parking. We plow that when we plow the rest of the lot, and we really can't plow it without having a lease or some sort of agreement to use it for a public purpose.
Is that down where the sports shop was?
Yes, yep. And the first one was, I think, nineteen eighty-four, and then they had one in two thousand and nine, and we renewed it in fourteen, and it makes like, it had missed and fell through the cracks, so. So the village has still been maintaining it for the last eleven years, even without a written lease. But it's basically everything in the back there on West Main Street going down to where the coach is. And there's a separate lease with, with them.
So the what, north side?
North side of the building, south side of the parking lot.
South side of the building, south side.
Yeah, their property line goes, just like the property to the east, it goes about the middle of the drag lane. We own the first, we own eighteen, I think it's called, the first. Well, we, we applied the coach parking lot on the north side of the drag lane in those parking spaces, but on the south side, those two lots, seven and then nine through seventeen, extend about halfway in, so we've always had a lease there as, it's a public parking lot, the public, it's our end, and be able to connect that where we have a lease on the coach parking lot. We don't wanna stop plowing the sidewalk halfway down and then starting in that one versus or the parking lot.
This is a lease for the village, or it's a lease for the.
Now, the village is leasing the property.
Leasing that property.
From Mr. Lindsay.
Wishes to continue to lease it.
Wishes to, may we start back up leasing it again?
Cause it expired.
Yes.
So we're not creating something that wasn't there, it's just.
It's always been leased, well, the case has changed since the lease.
For the lease, if the plowing had to do, in other words.
Yeah.
But they said, but there's no monetary.
Right, no. The consideration is, is the village takes care of the snow plowing and also maintenance of the paved areas. And there's a provision that if the, it's a, it's a seven and a half year lease with an automatic seven and a half year renewal, so it's essentially a fifteen year lease, if Mr. Lindsay decides to cancel it before the fifteen years is up, there's a provision where he reimburses the village what the village spent to, um, like if they had repaid the parking lot, they prorate that.
So, uh, we have, does anybody understand that?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
We have that motion in front of the board. Uh, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Trustee Abalito?
Aye, Heather.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Maranty?
Aye.
Oops, wait, did I do that wrong? I could go back to you. Trustee Balke, I'm sorry.
Why'd you gotta go back to that?
Didn't I, I messed up the order. Trustee Maranty?
Aye.
Do I go on orders sometimes, you guys? Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Well, it is six eighteen, so we are here for the public hearing. Um, at this point, I will open the floor to anyone who would like to address this, but, um.
You gotta open the meeting, is it usually that?
Open the public hearing.
Oh, okay, so. Well, um, this, uh, proposed local law is, um, granted provision to the Village Code to allow contract awards based upon best value. Uh, the law is entitled, "The Village of Webster Best Values Contract Award." Um, and what this would do is, uh, this would allow the village to, uh, contract and to purchase items that, um, may not necessarily be the most fit. But, uh, best value, uh, something that we've had a discussion on, and Jake has talked about it in past meetings. I open it up, anyone who'd like to address the board. And I will close the public comment portion on that, on that, and, um, I guess I would open that up. Anybody on the board have any question?
I think it's good.
Yeah, I like the flexibility on, because a lot of times you get stuck with the lowest bidders and.
Yeah, absolutely.
For sure.
Go ahead.
So, um, closing the public comment portion of the meeting, and I will move then to item number, uh, I would refer down to you, do I have to do three first and then four?
Yeah, three first, and I put these together, uh, this afternoon. I could say, I thought my paralegal was gonna prepare this since it was his little law, but he sort of didn't. So, in any event, and, and I couldn't remember whether we had the public hearing or not, so I thought maybe we had at the last meeting. So where it says, August twenty-eighth, you guys, you know, Heather, you got the, the, word versions of, so you just gotta put in both resolutions, September ninth at six fifteen. So you see that, Daryl, and that's in the one, two, three, fourth, whereas clause of that resolution?
And seeker?
Says August twenty-eighth.
Yeah, it's actually today. We just had. And also, and, and it's the ninth of September is the date of it at the top there, so I put October for some strange reason.
You don't prove your own stuff?
I don't, no. I didn't have time to, I usually would send it to my paralegal if he can catch these kinda things, so this was done kind of.
Is that Mary?
On chart, no, I was pointing to.
Heather, I think you should be on the hard tile, I thought.
No, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna.
This was done on, I, we've sort of, I sort of forgot this was gonna happen today, so it was done on charts.
Can I?
I don't know, you're still at the Bills game in your head.
Yesterday was kinda a. Yesterday was kinda a wasted day.
This date is September ninth, but I heard if I saw that.
Yep. All public.
Well, uh, and then we have in front of the board, this resolution of the Village of Webster. Nope, seeker. What would this seeker be?
If you go down through, it's, it's a type two action.
Type two action. There we are.
It's got, it's got no impact on the environment, whether you use best value to purchase something or not.
This would be, I guess, a combination. Can we do that, Don? Can we combine these together, three and four? Resolution to adopt a seeker, which is a type two action on the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, subject to environmental review, this action. And, um, this action is part of the resolution to adopt this proposed local law number two, entitled, "The Village of Webster Best Value Contract Award," uh, which we have here in front of us. Uh, the basis of this, for awarding contracts for services to the offer, uh, offerer, which optimizes quality, cost, and efficiency among responsive and responsible offers, such basis shall, um, reflect whenever possible objective and quantifiable analysis. Such basis may also identify a quantitative factor for offers that is, uh, that are small businesses or certified minority, or women owned business prices as defined in subdivisions one, three, thirteen, and twenty of section one ten of the executive law to be used in evaluation of offers for awarding of contracts or services. And this law would become immediately, I'm filing with the Secretary of.
So we gotta do adopt seeker first, right?
Yeah.
And then, you can't put together all that. All right, Don?
Well, yeah, you just, the first resolution is basically, you're just resolving that it's a type two action.
Right.
So you take a vote on that.
All right.
And then you take a vote on the adapting the local law, which is what we have.
Which is the other.
So just say what Don said, and it's all.
Right. Somebody, somebody, somebody make a, a, a motion to, it's a type two.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, yes.
Type two action.
It's a type two.
Correct.
Correct.
Carl, oh, Carl, Carl seconded.
Trustee Lauer?
Our Mike seconded.
Aye.
And Trustee Maranty?
Aye.
Trustee Balke?
Aye.
Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next then.
And next is simply a resolution to, to adopt proposed local law number two.
Which is entitled, quote, "The Village of Webster Best Value Contract." I think we're all quite familiar with the nature of it, so.
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Balke?
Aye.
Trustee Maranty?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now, we can move to item number five. A resolution to accept a proposal from Henderson Products for the purchase of equipment to upfit the two thousand twenty-six marked granite for the proposed dated, proposal dated August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, utilizing the MPP government contract in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and ninety cents, and further authorizes the mayor or as does he need to execute all documents required to facilitate the purchase. We have gone through this, Jake, you explained it, certainly was through, now I was amazed at the detail, if I told you, if they provided here in terms of things that are included and not, so.
Sorry.
I'd make the motion.
I'll second, sir.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Trustee Balke?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Maranty?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Telescopic hoist with internal doghouse? That's a piece.
Yeah, it's in some side, the, inside the dump box, the cylinder that lift it is, uh, dump box, and they're all piled around it.
Done.
Well, at this particular point, I guess you're at number seven. Resolution to authorize the scheduling of a special election for the dis, disminish match from the Village of Xerox property east of Coach Road. I think all of you are aware, or should be aware of discussions that we've had with Xerox and the town. Um, Xerox is now proposing that, uh, the village line be moved on the west side of Phillips, the west, called the West Campus, that that line be moved to Toyota, uh, which would then put the road Panama Orchard, and, uh, also then, the Tredene, that moves are the roads that the village is looking to take, uh, ownership of, and also that we're dealing with New York State in terms of providing money for their, their, their location. But, um, in terms of moving that land to the north, uh, the town has, uh, and the village and Xerox has agreed, um, to move the, uh, village boundary south to Mitchell Beach, uh, and carving out the property that, um, belongs to Xerox, which is their security. So.
So, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure the actual petition made it into your packet. But I know I got a cover letter on their short form environmental assessment form, which isn't a petition. So, do you guys have the petition? I don't think you have a petition.
No.
You should probably look it here, I'll pass it down. But here's the petition. If you look at, the important things are, you know, it's unoccupied, nobody lives on any of the property, the, the village, Matt Eldred worked with the town's successor to try to figure out what the village, amount of village taxes that were paid on the pieces to be, uh, given up by the village, and she came up with approximately one thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents, because it's actually a portion of a much larger tax parcel, but they got it under. But you can see, next to the petition, these are the two pieces that are supposed to be carved out of the village. You can see the little cutout for, for building three seventeen on that parcel A, and then the parcel B is that little thin strip that goes up to Ridge Road. Yeah, the way Matt, don't worry.
I don't think I got it.
He did, but it was two, you click, he did two separate attachments, and you just printed the wrong one. You have it, but that's okay. There's not much to it, Bill. It's only a two-page petition.
Did you say three seventeen?
Yes. No, they're, it's used by security, Zerox Security.
Yeah.
And then serviced by village, a village sewer. So that's why it needed to be carved out.
Okay.
Otherwise, the town, it can't, cannot be, um, diminished by the village, because it's served, serviced by a village.
Okay.
This little piece down here, that we've talked about, owns, the village owns.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's any particular need for it, but, uh, or reason why, but, um, would that be significant as a, uh, bargaining chip later on?
How wide is it?
It splits the, it splits the property.
What is it, sixteen or?
Oh, sixty feet wide, Jake?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five feet wide, is my understanding. Well, they'd have to, um, they'd have to give us another petition, if, if you are not in favor of diminishing that portion of the village. Xerox doesn't own the properties to the east or west of that little strip over here.
Well, correct.
Someone else has it.
Correct, I know that. However, as it does kind of split that, so that anything that is done across it would have to be done separate versus putting a road in, and it all becomes part of the town. I'm just, uh, I'm just wondering about that at this particular point, but. I'd hate to delay other things.
It's up to, it's up to this board, I guess.
Would delay things, but.
Yeah, they'd have to submit another petition.
I think we will.
And then you'd have to, you'd have to vote on it, or you'd have to set the, the election at your meeting on the twenty-fifth, no, not the twenty-fifth, the eighteen. When is the next?
Twenty twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, yeah, so on the twenty-fifth, and then you, what's, uh, three months from September twenty-fifth? It's Christmas.
It's Christmas.
So you'd have to have the special election after Christmas, because the board elections needs requires, under state law, three months. needs requires, under state law, three months' notice. Frankly.
We'll let it go.
Frankly, I don't think Xerox cares one way or the other, because they don't own any of the pieces to the left or the right. The town may have an issue with you not doing it now, but that's, that's for this board to deal with. It's not a legal issue.
At this point, it's fine.
Yeah.
So, having seeker.
No, you don't have to deal with seeker now.
Correct, although the way.
Although, I don't know how that works with an election. Normally, under, under our article, there is no board action. Board action is simply to schedule the special election, and then it's up to the voters whether it's yes or no, and they don't, they don't rule on seeker. So I don't really think we need to do seeker. You have to do seeker for the, for the west campus ones, because that's a local law that ultimately gets adapted by this board to annex that town. The other, I don't think seeker really applies, because it's an election.
Which I think.
So there's no, the only action by this board is to set the date for the election, which is a ministerial act, so if it, if seeker's involved at all, it's type two. That's the only involvement of this board, is to set the date.
Christmas Eve is? What, 16th of December?
Yeah, that was the date that was discussed before. There you go. So you also see attached was the resolution by the town board consenting to the diminu- diminution of the boundaries of the village.
They're agreeing to the fact that boundary would move south on the east side.
Right, right. The village law 18-1804 requires the consent of the town. I'm not exactly sure why, because it's already within the town, so, but at this day, who says it?
So personally, at this point, I don't mind moving forward with this resolution of the village board of trustees to cause proposition for diminishing the boundaries of the village of Webster to be submitted for the special election. I personally don't mind doing that, but what do we do about the last thing?
Well, that's, that's the other, you can set the date for a joint public hearing. We're going to talk about that later. That's a separate proceeding.
And you do have the resolution up at the top?
Yeah, at the very top.
I just got it. I've already finished these, I'm sorry.
So, I will, I will put this up for then a vote, which is, the resolution of the village of Webster Board of Trustees to cause a proposition for diminishing the boundaries of the village of Webster to be submitted on a special election. And the petition pursuant to the village law, section 18-1804, having been presented to the village board of trustees by the Xerox Corporation, a copy of said petition is attached. And we are looking at a resolution by the board as follows. Number one, the following proposition for diminishing the boundaries of the village of Webster shall be submitted to all duly registered voters of the village of Webster at a special election to be held on December 16, 2025. Quote, "Shall the boundaries of the village of Webster be diminished by exclusion of the following territory. One, northwest portion of a parcel with tax ID number 06519111, bounded by the south of Mitchell Dean Drive, on the east by Rosendi Road, on the west by the westerly line of the village of Webster, and on the north by northerly line of the village of Webster. One, accepting and reserving therefrom that portion thereof, bounded on the south by Mitchell Dean Drive, on the east by Rosendi Road, on the north by a line running parallel width and 320 feet distance from the center line of Mitchell Dean Drive, and on the west by a line running directly north from Mitchell Dean at a distance of 700 feet from the intersection of its center line with, center line of Rosendi Road until it meets the northerly line of such petition. And two, a southerly portion of parcel with tax ID number 06519-111, bounded by the south, on the south by Ridge Road, on the east by a parcel of land with tax ID number 080.02-1-62, and parcel with tax ID number 080.02-1-54 in the town of Webster, on the west by a parcel with tax ID 080.02-1-54 in the town of Webster, and on the north by a line drawn from the northeast corner of a parcel with tax ID number 80.02-1-54 to the northwest corner of a parcel with tax ID 080.02-1-62. Number two, a special election shall be administered by the county, Monroe County Board of Elections. A copy of this resolution shall be provided to the Monroe County Board of Elections as soon as may be practicable." What this is saying is that they would like to have them run an election, right? For this parcel. Lots of tax ID numbers, but it does define property.
Yep.
And this will lead to the increase of village property by the village annexing on the west campus. So this resolution is in front of the board. December 16th?
Yep.
So do I have a, a motion to?
Yes.
I'll authorize the scheduling of this special election.
I'll make a motion for December 16th of 2025.
I'll second it.
Do you have the time set?
You know, I don't know. That's why I put in there about being administered by the board of elections. They'll figure all that out.
Okay, maybe someone we know could help us out with that, I'm not sure.
Like, I don't know if they're gonna just do it at, well, Peter, oh. For the special election on December 16th, do you want us to insert in the resolution, which we're gonna forward to the board of elections, the time of the election? Like, I don't know if it's noon till six, or noon till nine, or.
We would typically do, we would typically do it noon to nine, if you want to do it the normal, but I don't see any reason the board couldn't set the hours that you wish to have. So. But a normal, but a normal village election is noon to nine.
So if you want to add to the number one, to be held on December 16th, 2025, from noon until 9:00 p.m.
So can we retract that last motion? Okay.
And I don't know, you know, is it all gonna be just one voting place, or it's up to the board of elections?
We can, we'll talk to, we'll talk to Heather about that, so, see the logistics.
The village have more than one?
It can.
Can.
It can. It's a, it's very, in Monroe County, it's, it doesn't happen, but it could. In other, other places in the state, it has, but there's more than one polling site. For a village election. For a November election occurring in the village, there's actually three. Yeah, there's two, there's two.
Can you also tell me, like, what, this is my, this will be my first special election for this type of stuff? Could you allow us to know, like, what we might have to send to the Herald, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, it's gonna be significant notice issues, yeah, we gotta talk about that.
Okay.
Seems like you two should.
So now, should I amend this?
Yeah, just put that, just to add that from noon until 9:00 p.m. at the tail end of the sentence of paragraph one.
Or to make a motion to amend its resolution to read in paragraph one that the special election to be held on December 16, 2025, from noon till 9 o'clock.
Location TBD. Probably here, though. I would just say here.
At the village committee.
We'll leave that up to the.
Okay, we'll take.
Leave that up to the board. That's why I said they're gonna administer it. Whatever the board of elections wants to do.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second again.
Perfect, I'm gonna have to do it again. Trustee Appolito?
Aye.
Trustee Buckey?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Maranty?
Aye.
Mayor Burns?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Don, she'd like me to reset that to her, so she doesn't miss any of the changes you just made. Please.
You, you lost the word file that I sent you.
No, it's right here, like.
Like an hour and a half ago.
But I didn't, what I'm saying is.
She's one chair away, I'm not sure why.
Do I need to make the changes, is that what you're saying? I can do that, that's not a big deal.
I just didn't catch them, and I don't want another version, I don't want to, this is pretty important. Thank you, sorry.
Sorry. Anything else you want me to, hold on.
As long as the, one of the election commissioners is here. When the village clerk transmits this resolution, do you want it to go directly to you or somebody in particular down there?
No, you can send it directly to me. I'll make sure, I'll make sure the Democratic Commissioner also gets it, so.
Okay.
Just like they did for that.
Exactly the same thing, yeah.
Thanks for showing up.
Late, but.
And also for the, the original, the petition, Matt Eldred put in the mail today.
I got it today.
You already got it from the.
They carried it over today.
Oh, nice. All right, so you got the original?
Yes.
You didn't have to do that.
Yeah.
Actually, sent an email to Jake to see if, inherent to see, because I'm not gonna be here, but maybe there's a better place to put it, so I just wanna.
Yeah, same.
Yeah, it's, there's all the files and the prom, the agreements and things like that, that seems like a logical spot, but that's also where I found the one we didn't do for 11 years.
That's what I'm trying to avoid.
But at least I found it.
And I'll make that note that I was not here in 2014, you're saying, okay?
Wow.
Wow. New ready, does that conclude?
Oh, thank you.
I'm with you.
May have another public hearing.
No.
To say.
To say.
Yeah, the, so.
Oh, yes, for the.
Right, so you have in front of you, this is for the west campus, the piece, you know, Panama, Chiota, Phillips, and it cuts across, I don't know, further away down that suburb, some of your radius, whatever it is. And this is for the village to annex property that's under general municipal law, Article 17, no special elections, but you have to have a joint public hearing with the town board. And back on August 26th, my notes show that it was proposed that the joint public hearing be held on.
October 21st.
October 21st. And that's what this resolution says. I don't know what time you want to do it. I don't know what time the town board normally meets. Do they meet at 7:00 or?
7:30.
So I don't know when you want to do it. That's why I left a blank for the time. Whenever we talked about it, it was gonna be held in this room.
Yep, we would do that.
But, but you just need to put in a time, and then, and then I put that the village clerk and/or the town clerk, because the next thing that's supposed to happen is, the town has to also take a resolution to set the joint public hearing, because we can't obviously obligate the town to show up if they don't want to. And, and so I'm gonna suggest that the town provide, or prepare the notice that's gonna go into the Webster Herald. But just in case they want us to do it, I put either the village clerk or, and/or the town clerk.
Can they send one for us, too?
There's only one notice, yes.
Good.
It's one, it's a joint notice by both the town.
Okay.
At the bottom of it, it's gonna have both the village clerk and the town clerk at the bottom of it, but I just don't know, since they're taking the resolution. Second, to me, it made sense that they prepare the notice, but if they want us to do it, we could, that's why I put an and/or there. But that's a sort of a to-be-discussed with the town.
So we can't really set it right now, if we don't know the time, right?
Well, we should. Pick a time, you know, if they normally do their, they normally do their public hearings at 7:30, right?
They start their meetings at 7:30.
Do we have a regular meeting that day?
They do.
No, it's on a Tuesday. This is on a Tuesday.
It's their meeting.
Then if it's a Tuesday, that's.
No, they don't have a meeting, they, they meet on Thursday.
Maybe on Thursday.
They don't have a meeting either on a Tuesday.
Oh, they don't.
But then that's our workshop meeting, so 6:00 or 6:30?
Well, 6:30. Since we haven't had a chance to actually talk to the town about this, if you put in the time that they normally do public hearings, how could they complain? They may not, I don't know if they want to do it 6:00 or 6:30.
7:00? Oh, 7:30?
Did you say I don't? I don't know.
Was it October 16th?
What was the date again?
21st.
21st, October 21st.
So I don't know, can't believe it, do it at 7:00.
We just had an appointment. I've worked on it, 7:00.
217.
All right.
Right?
I did, I did, 17 up there.
I did have a date or seventeen up there.
Seven o'clock?
No, no.
You okay for seven? Seven?
Yeah, whatever.
All right, let's say seven o'clock, can you?
All right, so then we usually, so the publication, if the town considers this at their next meeting, well, so let's see. I don't think Xerox is going to care what date we consider the petition being accepted. We, the, the notice has to be published within twenty days of getting the petition. But I suppose we could say we got it today. So, huh, this is what that's on. Oh, published on, so they, the, the town would take this up at their meeting in the eighteenth. So it will be published in the next week's Herald, which would be the twenty-fifth day of September. We see that at number two there, Heather, you fill in September twenty-fifth?
So our resolution, Don, will be that this joint hearing will be on October twenty-first, twenty-five, at seven o'clock, seven P.M. And, um, the clerk and/or village clerk and town clerk provide notice of the time to place a such joint hearing by publication once or before the twenty-fifth day of September, twenty twenty-five.
Correct.
Correct. And this is to schedule a joint public hearing to consider the petition to annex territory in the town of Webster to the village of Webster pursuant to general municipal law Article seventeen. I have a motion to move on that?
Yeah, I will make that motion.
Trustee Ibelido?
Aye.
Trustees Belkine and Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Morenci?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Well, I have nothing else. That brings us then to... Who would like to go first? Kevin?
Um, we just have our September eleven ceremony on Thursday at six o'clock at Veterans Memorial Park. And it'll be a very nice event. The village band will be there and we invite all to come.
PPW, six o'clock.
I feel like we have, last meeting, there was a conversation during the restrooms here. We found some preliminary cleaning. I was getting a cabinet to put some of the supplies in. And we've got a P.O. for five flush valves, um, the automated flush valves for the facilities. What's that?
I forgot that you answered my last question about that. Do you want me to order one or two of those covers? One for each or just one?
It's probably one for, I don't know, I don't go any other ones. I think there's one in there. I think there's shelves in there.
Okay.
Or there's not shelves in the other one. Nice and plain, so, very nice. In progress.
Anything else?
Doing brush this week, um, and sadly getting ready for leaves, so.
Sure.
Yeah, goes back quick.
All right. Uh, I would reinforce that, uh, we, uh, will be meeting on Thursday down at Fets Park, six o'clock for our memorial to nine eleven ceremony. And, um, it will be not quite as long as it has been in the past. So, uh, currently it's been very hot. This year, I don't think it'll be quite as, quite as hot, but it will be sunny. And, uh, but I do encourage all of you to come out. This is year number twenty-four in terms of, uh, since that fateful day. So, uh, come out, bring a chair, and, uh, help us remember. I think the rest of things, like, there are conjugal going on this week, I think, on Sunday, is it, in the Fireman's Field? There's posters still up, some game playing.
Saturday.
On Saturday, Webster Rocks.
I saw it outside of that site out there.
For the ALS fundraiser.
Yeah, for ALS fundraiser, yep.
Huge event.
Great event, some support, and, um...
An ALS event is not a village event, though, just?
No, it's not.
Okay.
But it is a great event. You know, the ALS is very good village.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, does anybody else have anything for the, for the order? Not?
How are we doing with the signage?
How are we doing with signage? We agreed right on a...
Is moving great. The woman from the side.
The Carolers?
Yes, she was on vacation. She's back today. Um, so everything's been putting in and ordered and we're moving right along.
It's in the pipeline.
Good, good. Because I hate, I hate emails.
Close your eyes when you call that.
I guess, yeah. All right, Peter, with me?
So yes, they are, um, everything moving along?
Anything else? If not, I'll never take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for watching. Good evening.
Oh, it's okay, I already looked at it. Oh, and I'm lying, oh, thank you for asking.
No, she cut it.
I'll file it. File it.